Hello, everyone, and welcome to Clarksville's Political Forum. I'm Van Stokes, your moderator for today's session, and on behalf of Leadership Clarksville and your Clarksville area Chamber of Commerce, we're glad you could be with us today. Today's forum is coming to you from the Customs House Museum and Cultural Center here in Clarksville. This forum is intended to give you, the voters, an informed choice when you go to the polls to vote for the candidate of your choice on November the 3rd. Today, we will have the opportunity to talk with the candidates who will be on the ballot for Clarksville City Council Ward Number Four. They are, to my left, Mr. Wallace Redd, Mr. Tim Chandler, and Ms. Margaret Thompson. Now, in a moment, they will each have two minutes in which to present opening comments from their seats at the table. Following their opening remarks, we will then turn to our panelists for questions. Joining us today, on my right, are our panelists, Mr. Jimmy Settle, Mr. Lee Erwin, and Mr. Jay Alberta. Each candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question. Responses will be given in a rotating order. And then, at the conclusion of the questioning, each candidate will have two minutes in which to present closing remarks. Closing comments will come in reverse order from the opening remarks. Our timekeeper for this session is Mr. Phil Harpell. Our city council here in Clarksville is comprised of 12 council members, each representing a different ward here in the city. Their members are each elected to a four-year term. The city council votes on city ordinancees and resolutions governing the city of Clarksville, and also approves the budget for the city, sets the city property tax rate, as well as many other things. Council members approve changes to the city policies, as well as specified, those specified in the city code. The council is also responsible for adopting potentially far-reaching policies and ensuring that those policies are indeed followed, accountability being the name of the game. Each council member is appointed to serve on one or more committees. They may include Community and Economic Development Committee, Finance Committee, Gas and Water Committee, Parks and Recreation Committee, Public Safety Committee, Streets and Garage Committee, or Transportation Committee. Let's turn now to our candidates, if we can, for opening comments. We will hear first from Mr. Wallace Redd.
Thank you, and first, let me say thank you to the chamber for hosting this forum today. My name is Wallace Redd. I'm a candidate for City Council Ward Four. My wife Helga and I, we've lived there in Ward Four for the last 35 years. We raised our three children there. We owned and operated Helga's Daycare in Ward Four. We take pride in our community and the people that live there. I'm running for City Council to put our neighborhoods first. As a child, my parents instilled into me an old-fashioned patriotism for public service. Like my father and my grandfather, I served in the Army, starting way back in 1978, to do my part for my country. I served two years in the 11th Armored Cavalry Regiment in Germany, and I also served a tour here with the 101st at Fort Campbell. I also served as a former council member, the mayor pro tem, and a county commissioner. Service to my county and to my community has been both an honor and a privilege, and I'm thankful for it. I'll work to put our neighborhoods first. I'm not afraid to say no to bad and costly ideas. And just like in the past, I'll work for ethics reforms to help keep our elected leaders more accountable. Regardless of your income or your social status, I believe that we all deserve to live in a safe neighborhood. After all, we all pay taxes. I'll work to guard your rights and your freedoms, and I will be fair and honest with everyone. I'll hold regular community meetings to help those that I represent. Again, I'm Wallace Redd, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
And thank you. Next, we will hear opening comments from Mr. Tim Chandler.
Thanks, sir. Again, I'd like to thank the chamber and everybody for putting this on, and I'm going to apologize right off the bat to wearing the mask, but I was exposed to somebody that did test positive. By doctor's orders, I have had one negative test, but he wanted to make sure it was two before I moved on. I am your current sitting Ward Four City Councilman. My platform has been, for the last four years, to watch out for not just the citizens of Ward Four, but the entire city. I'm proud to say that we have not raised our taxes in four years, and we have provided more services. I am chairman of the Street Department and the Garage. The other day, in the meeting, it was reported we have new 110 miles of city streets. And the last four years, not just myself, but the entire city council, and that doesn't mean just me, and not just our council people, but our workers, have managed to give the cities, the citizens of Clarksville, the very top service for the same amount of money that we spent in 2016. I'm also a member of the Gas and Water Committee, the Finance Administration Committee, and I have been on the Housing and Development. When I first started running, and it wasn't no big secret that in the city, we have a lot of unchecked growth. Real quick, give you an example. A area out off Tyler Town Road was developed, and now we're having to pay over half a million dollars to redesign that road. I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear opening comments from Ms. Margaret Thompson.
Good day, people of Clarksville. I'd first like to thank the Chamber of Commerce and Leadership Clarksville for giving me the opportunity to be heard, and introduce myself to people who may not know who I am. My name's Margaret Thompson, and I'm running to be the City Councilperson for Ward Four. First, I'd like to say that I'm educated. I have a bachelor's degree in liberal studies. I am a educator. I teach middle school math. I'm not a politician, so I'm learning how to be a politician, but I am an educator. I also have a master's degree in mental health counseling. I am experienced. I work with all kinds of people. I am definitely Title VI compliant. I'm a union rep. I get out and work with, I'm the building pie representative, so I get out and work with different businesses. And then, I am also effective. I am the Judas Savitin advisor, so I'm out doing community service. I'm out doing all different kinds of things in the community. So, as your representative, I would continue to do these things within the community. Oh, goodness. Anyway, I would advocate for Ward Four. I was a former teacher at Kenwood Middle School, so I'm quite aware of what goes on, not only in my community, but also with the youth in the community. I would advocate for activities for the youth. I would advocate for safer streets. I would advocate for, there's so many things that just need to go on. And because of these things, I really ask for your vote to make these changes. Anyway, my name is Margaret Thompson, and I look forward to serving you as your next councilperson.
Thank you very much for the opening comments from each of our candidates. We will now turn to our panelists for a series of questions, each question to be answered by each candidate. Let's begin with Mr. Jimmy Settle. Your question will go to Mr. Wallace Redd for the first response.
Thank you, Van. Mr. Redd, just to follow up from the opening remarks, what uniquely qualifies you for the Ward Four seat on the Clarksville City Council? Why should people specifically vote for you?
Well, like I said in my, that's a very good question, Jimmy, first off, and like I said in my opening statement, I have experience. I've been on the city council before. I served as the mayor pro tem. There's one other thing that gives me a unique experience. I served on all three charter revision committees within the city. The first charter revision committee, I chaired that committee. That was made up of the largest committee, I think, that Clarksville's ever had. Part of it was part of the city council. It was part of a citizenry board. I think we had 15 members, and we went through every bit of the code, and we went through every bit of the charter. So, I have a deep understanding of city government, and that gives me an insight for being on that committee. I also chaired the Finance Committee whenever I was on the city council before, and I served as a member of the County Commission, so I know how the county works with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chandler.
Thank you. Again, like Mr. Redd, I've been on the city council for four years. Before that, I worked for the city for 34 years. I dedicated my life to this city as a police officer. I know and knew, I still know and did know, excuse me, the internal works of the city. What makes me unique is I don't hold meetings. I put my phone number out. My cellphone number is on 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. I put that cellphone number out so people can call me. I average about 10 to 15 phone calls a day. I don't make people wait to come to a meeting. I want them to be able to pick up the phone, call me when something is fresh on their mind. So, being able to get ahold of me and my dedicated service to this city, I've lived here all my life, that's what makes me qualified. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Thompson.
That is a very good question. What makes me qualified is I'm not the politician. I haven't sat on the council or the commission. When I walked around and talked to the people in Ward Four, they didn't know who their councilpeople were. A lot of them didn't know what ward they sat in. What makes me qualified is that, like them, I am just a regular person. I know what they need. I know what they want, and I feel like I can better meet their needs. I'm not over here reading, you know, I'm just a regular person. And that's what makes me qualified. It's just that. I'm not trying to be above anybody. You know, on November 4th, I will still be the same person I was on November 3rd.
Thank you very much. Let's go to Mr. Lee Erwin next. Your question will go to Mr. Chandler.
Mr. Chandler, let's talk about Ward Four for just a moment, and if you can narrow it down to maybe a top issue, what is that issue that is specific to your ward, and what plans do you have to address that issue?
I think that our biggest problem that we face is the concentration of growth and traffic. Of course, we're in a unique situation in that all of our feeder roads are state highways. You know, we can jump up and down, beat our chest all day long, and until the state decides they want to come up with some money, then we just have to kind of sit back and wait. I have been in contact with our state legislators about getting the extension that's coming off of 101st 374 as an, to help alleviate the problem. We're just going to have to work and have smarter growth. That's what the problem is. We got to have smarter growth so we can maintain our roadways and things. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson.
In talking with the people, it seems that the major concern is the traffic, the lack of sidewalks. Two people have died on Providence this year, just trying to cross the street. If you look at the map of Clarksville, I go through the intersection of Providence, Craft, Second, Riverside, at least 400 times a year, and it's almost always jam-packed. And if you look at the map, if you're trying to get from the south of Clarksville to the north of Clarksville, there's only one way, and that's, it's through that intersection. Clarksville needs to build another way through, and especially if the 2040 plan is to adopt more area south of town. What else? If you've ever been down Dover Road and you were looking to make a left-hand turn, it's like, you seen that movie Death Race? Those people are shoot, 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 shoot. It's almost like, look, you just clench your cheeks and pray that you make it. There's, it's, yes, the roads, the sewers, especially down like Charlemagne, if they get clogged, so the roads get flooded, and it's dangerous. I mean, there's just a lot of safety issues, I think, is probably one of the main problems.
And Mr. Redd.
I think you said if you had to narrow it down to one, and I'm going to, I'm going to try to stay within one. It's hard. We've been, my wife and I, we've been going around knocking doors, and we've made a list of a lot of items, and I can tell you, it's easy to see that, I think, the main one is, but I'm going to give you the one that comes second, as well as the number one. The main one is speeding in the neighborhoods. We have a lot of through fair streets, like Kelsey Drive and Charlemagne, these type roads that people are driving through to get to another road. And we have the Greenway that goes from Pollard Drive, and there's lots of complaints with people speeding on Pollard Drive, and it has no shoulder whatsoever. The second one would be, that I think would come into a close second in our ward, would be the traffic coming up Boot Hill. Years ago, we placed a signal guard there, and that alleviated some of the traffic. I think we have one there now, but we need to address those.
Thank you very much. Let's go next to Mr. Jay Alberta for the next question, and it will go to Ms. Margaret Thompson for the first response.
Today, nationally, the conversation is around the funding for police departments. Do you think Clarksville Police Department is adequately funded, or would you ever consider a vote to defund the police department in Clarksville?
Thank you for that question, Jay. I would never advocate for defunding the police department. I think we could look at other ways of spending money, or looking to make sure that the money that the police department is getting is being spent smartly. But defunding, no. When I call 911, I'm going to need them to show up ready to go. That's just, I need them to show up armed and ready, if that's what I need them to do. I think they need vehicles that run properly. I think they need their body cameras for their protection, as well as ours. And they need to be armed, because there are dangerous people who shoot at them and at us. But as far as funding, I think they need the funds that they have. They probably need more. I don't know what their budget is, but we need to make sure that it's being spent away smartly.
Thank you. Mr. Redd.
Well, I think if you asked all the departments and the department heads within the city, they're going to say that they're, I'm sure that they're going to need more funding or an increase in their budget, and that's fine. That's their, that's their job. I am like the mayor, and I do not believe that we should defund the police, obviously. I think, and I had a meeting with the mayor, and we discussed once about maybe looking at some other type technologies, some non-lethal technologies, like the RAP, where it shoots out and it wraps a person's legs, for those that have a mental type problem that's coming to the police, or non-lethal other type weapons that maybe could be used instead of, to stop perpetrators in certain instances. But I certainly would not be for defunding the police.
Mr. Chandler.
Thank you. I'm going to contradict Mr. Redd. There's no such thing as less lethal. Everything that the police uses, it has the capability of killing somebody. I was a training officer for about nine years, and I trained these people. We're fortunate enough in Clarksville that we have an exceptional police department. No, defunding is not the answer. The answer is accountability. I don't think there's a citizen in this city, or this state, or this country, that would say we need to completely defund the police. We need to set accountability standards. We need to adhere to them. If you mess up as a police officer, you go to prison, just like when you mess up. If you're a citizen, you shoot somebody wrong. That's my gut feeling about this is, no defunding, accountability, 100%.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's go back to Mr. Jimmy Settle, if we can, for the next question, and it will go to Mr. Wallace Redd.
Mr. Redd, it seems that during this period of COVID that we're in, we've seen a response from the residential development community in terms of an escalation in the amount of land use rezoning that's going on around town for new housing development. It's as if they're preparing for a boom when all this is over with, it seems, to accommodate predictions of growth. Some say that it's out of control right now. What do you say?
Well, first, let me answer that last comment. I mean, RAP technology, of course, is a lot less lethal, being shot with that that just wraps around your leg or your body, I believe, than being shot with a 9-millimeter round. I mean, that's why there's pepper spray and pepper spray balls and that sort of thing. As far as the growth that we are having here, and you're seeing that, it's really because in Nashville, we have such an influx of people that are living here, because they just can't afford to live in Nashville. The rents are so high, they're in that bubble there, so they work in Nashville, and they can't afford the rent, so they're living here, and that's why we have such growth of the housing here. And what is going to happen once the bubble bursts in Nashville is anybody's guess. We may be left over with a lot of extra housing.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chandler.
Of course, if you listen to my opening statements, I believe growth has been out of control here for several years. I'm not against growth. I'm against smart growth. I mean, unsmart growth. I brought it up a while ago. Couple of years ago, a case was brought to us about annexing into the city out of a tiny Tyler Town Road, 100 and something acres. I was totally against it, because you could see it coming. It's no big secret. Tyler Town Road, Exit One, has been overdeveloped for the last 15, 16 years. And then, they come in with a plan the other day to redo that road, and just to move the water and gas lines is going to cost the tax, well, not the taxpayers, but the ratepayer over a half a million dollars. No, it's out of control, and we can't blame it on Nashville. We got to blame what we control on ourself. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes. Growth is inevitable. We are going to grow. Nashville is pushing their citizens out. They're outpricing them. Right now, Clarksville has less than 500 houses on the market we need to build. We're not building fast enough for the people that are being pushed out of the city, out of Nashville. It would be more cost-effective to build, to fill in the land that we have within the city than to build out. We already have the roads, the waters, the sewers, the electricity in the city. It would be actually more cost-effective to fill in the land that we have, to build up the infrastructure that is here, than to build new roads, to build out. We need to be accountable for the growth that we have, but it's going to happen, and we need to prepare for it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee Erwin. You have the next question, and it will go to Mr. Tim Chandler.
Mr. Chandler, let's talk about transparency for a moment, and how do you propose to stay connected with the residents of Ward Four, and also increase their involvement in the planning for the future of the city?
Thank you. It's like I said earlier, no, I don't hold meetings once a month. I make sure that my address, my telephone number is out there to everybody. I don't want them to have to wait until, well, you know, he don't meet until next Tuesday. I want them to pick up the phone and call me today. They can call me anytime. I have gone to visit my daughter, her husband's in the Air Force, and be in New York, and be sitting on her patio, fielding phone calls from citizens. That's how connected I think I am to them. They have the capability of contacting me around the clock.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson.
Can I get the question again, please?
Yes, talking about transparency, now, how do you propose to stay connected with the residents of Ward Four, and helping to increase their involvement in the planning for the future of the city?
Okay. Good question. Thank you. Currently, I spend a lot of time in the community. If you haven't seen me in the community, it's because you weren't in the community. I have, I do a lot of volunteer work. I actually just got an award from the Tennessee State Board of Association, from the School Board Association. Goodness. So, not only am I out in the community, but I'm digitally present. I could do emails. I can do community meetings. It's what the people need. I know I have met a lot of the older citizens who maybe don't do the digital presence. That would where the emails would come in, but a lot of the citizens are on Facebook, and then I, you know, I could go out and meet whoever I need. I would have to see where the people are before I could even commit to something like that. But I've heard so many different things, what they want and what they need, but I wouldn't do just once a month. I could do maybe once a month newsletter, and then do like the phone calls and the texts and the everyday, some type of digital media.
Thank you very much. Mr. Redd.
Well, I can always be reached at 931-216-5640. I do, and I did have regular community meetings. I did that, because we had a barge port that was being zoned real close to our ward off of High Point Road, and the people came to me at my house, and they wanted to have community meetings. And that's where my community meetings started, at the Kleeman Community Center, because I opposed that, and they wanted me to help the residents to organize that. And many of the residents, they do like to have regular community meetings, to hear the input from each other, not just to call me, but they can, anytime they want to, they can go to wallisred.com. I have other contact information there. I held meetings in my house with the owners of that barge, and with the nearby residents in order to write a noise ordinance to relieve the noise at night from those boulders being crushed for the people that live there. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Jay Alberta, you have the next question, and it will go to Ms. Margaret Thompson.
Ms. Thompson, let's take it a little bit personal for each one of you right now. Can you tell me what your greatest accomplishment that you think you're the proudest of?
Pretty much, my daughter is my most proud accomplishment. She gave me the courage, the reason to get myself together. She's the reason I'm sitting here. The reason I fight for the people. I was the mother, the single mother, who pushed the stroller to the bus stop, to the junior college. So, when I get on the bus, and I see there's no sidewalk for them to walk on, there's no shelter for them to wait at in the rain, it bothers me. And that's, you know, why I'm sitting up here. I have nothing to gain to be a city councilperson. I'm up here because I want to do for the people of Clarksville. You know, I'm not an eloquent speaker. I'm not a politician. I'm here because I want to make Clarksville better.
Thank you very, very much. Let's go next to Mr. Wallace Redd.
Thank you. I would say that my most best accomplishment will happen tomorrow. My wife is sitting back there, and tomorrow is our 40th anniversary, and for me to have a woman like that that's been with me for the last 40 years, every step of the way through thick and thin, I would say the day that I married her has been my greatest accomplishment, and I just love her and thank her for each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chandler.
Boy, I tell you, this is hard, but I'm going to have to go with her on this. I have three great children, two sons and a daughter. I have seven grandchildren. A man couldn't be any prouder. My daughter, when she was about 16, almost died, and, you know, there's... couldn't be any prouder. My daughter, when she was about 16, almost died. And, you know, there's nothing that makes me any prouder than them three plus those seven. Thank you.
Thank you. While I give our candidates and perhaps our panelists a chance to catch their breath, let me just tell you that you are watching Clarksville's political forum. We are meeting with candidates who will appear on the ballot November the 3rd for Ward Four of the Clarksville City Council. They are, to my left, Mr. Wallace Redd, Mr. Tim Chandler, and Ms. Margaret Thompson. We ready to go through another round, panelists?
Yes.
Let's do it. Mr. Jimmy Settle, your question will go to Mr. Wallace Redd.
Thank you, and I want to thank all of your very heartfelt comments a moment ago. That really touched me as well. But we talked a little bit about, in terms of growth, the residential component of growth a moment ago, and I'd like to shift to the economic development component, if we may, and ask you, what role should the city council play in economic development for the area? Are you, for example, are you happy or even in agreement with the current approach to recruiting new industry and new retail businesses to our community?
Well, I support the Economic Development Commission. I think they have a blueprint, you know, that goes over a lot of points that they'd like to make, business retention and marketing. They have 800 acres now that's in the industrial park with the IDB. We have Google. I think it brought in 60 jobs, LG 600. I think one of the keys is it's different from a lot of states. We have to remember keeping taxes low and regulations. The bottom line with businesses is, is that place friendly to a business? And lower taxes, lower regulation is key. We live in a pretty low-tax state, and that's what attracts businesses. One thing we have to remember, too, a big business that comes in and it employs a lot of people, when it goes out, you drop a lot of people. And let's try to remember that the small business is the biggest employer that we have in Tennessee and the nation.
Thank you. Mr. Chandler?
Thank you. You know, we have a well-functioning Economic Development Council and Industrial Development Board. I was fortunate enough to be able to sit on the Industrial Development Board for about a year. And my biggest concern, and I think they're doing an exceptional job, I think we could do a little better, but my biggest concern is, is when we start cutting these deals through the state, and we start doing in lieu of taxes. I understand that a lot of times that's what it takes to bring somebody in, but we've got to be careful. I mean, we can't start giving away our tax rate, even though we're employing people and bringing more people in. Is it costing us more? And, you know, you've just got to make sure that we stay above board and that we're not giving away something just to get a few jobs. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
Goodness. I think the economic council is doing a good job. I would like to see them bring more white-collar jobs into Clarksville. Currently, we have a population that is 16.3% college-educated, but a lot of those are working outside of their field, or they're having to travel to Nashville for jobs. So while they're in Nashville, they're spending their cash dollars in Nashville instead of in Clarksville where they could be building more business. We also have the 7.9% of graduate-level people who are not working here. We need more white-collar jobs. We could also increase our tech and aerospace, because in our lifetimes, tech's grown so much, and there's just so much more that it could be doing. Also, between the new casino and the in-going event center, that corridor right there could be so much more built up with the businesses going in and bringing some stuff off of Wilma Rudolph, relieving some of that traffic and that stuff off of Wilma Rudolph. We could build up that Fort Campbell area. There's lots of residents there, people coming off of a post and building business there as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lee Erwin, you have the next question, and it will go to Mr. Tim Chandler.
Mr. Chandler, of course, we've got consolidation of some city and county services and programs in place. What other areas do you see that the city could look to for consolidation of services that might save some money?
Well, you threw a curveball at me there. Weekend, you know, really and truly, until we change our charter, and the county changes the county's charter, you know, it's spelt out, a lot of the things that the county is responsible for is spelt out in state law. And that would be such as the sheriff and, you know, the court systems and things like that. What we can, one of the things that I proposed several, several years ago is that we get together and do that, if we don't do anything else but buy office supplies together, buy gas and oil together. And instead of having one government, put a couple together and start buying in bulk. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes, ma'am. Consolidation of some city and county programs and departments are currently in place, but what other areas do you see we could look to consolidation of services and maybe save some money?
I hadn't, I actually hadn't even considered thinking about consolidation. When I looked at some of the data and statistics, I thought specifically city, specifically Ward Four, but definitely transit, goodness, improving sustainability, greenways, blueways, bulk purchasing of, you know, what Mr. Chandler said would definitely be something we could do, because, goodness, roadways, goodness, you threw me for a curve, because that's something I did not research or consider.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Redd?
Well, thank you for that question, Lee. It looks like that the city, we are going to have to work with the county, I guess, with the event center. And it looks like this conference center and this office park that has been in the planning for the last three years, that we may have to provide for the services that's going to go into that. I read that the land purchased there is going to cost $50,000 an acre, and I think Mr. Settle had a write-up in the paper about that. So the city's going to be having to work with the county in some portion on that. And it's the site preparation in some parts of that's going to be with the city up to, I think, $2 million worth. I don't know if they took an appraisal of the land and just how much involvement, more than that, that we're going to be into. But it looks like that the city is going to be knee-deep into what the county is doing, because the county's been pretty aggressive in doing things in the city.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jay Alberta, you have the last question from our panelists, and it will go to Ms. Margaret Thompson for the first answer.
Let's go about these personal accomplishments. No, I'm joking. Almost daily, we hear about elected officials in all levels of government discussing issues related to ethical practices in their businesses, their office, and even personally. What is your position on the role of elected official and ethical standards while they're in office?
I think they need to be ethical. As a schoolteacher, we're held to, I believe that we're held to a higher standard. You know, I think there's certain professions that are held to, like, police officers, pastors, teachers, who are just, they're held to a higher standard. They're expected to be a certain level of ethics, a certain level of integrity. And I try to hold myself to that. I think everyone should hold themselves accountable. Everyone should always try to do what is best, because, and try to do what is right, because, I mean, you're not spending your money. You're not doing, you know, you're not up here doing what is best for you. You're not up here, you're here for the people. You know, I watched the last council meeting, and they did a vote on paying for an attorney, for the city attorney. And I don't know what happened behind the scenes, and maybe he deserved an attorney, but I didn't like how it got on the agenda. To me, in and of itself, it was unethical.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your response there. Mr. Redd?
Well, I was a very active member on the council and wrote several ordinances. And one of the ones I wrote, it was that you can't work for the city for up to one year after you leave office. And that came about for different reasonings. And, of course, this was, we had a person, a mayor, that went ahead and went to CDE, and there was a question whether or not that was part of the city. And it went to the state attorney general's office, and it was determined that, no, he could not stay with CDE. And it's not good, I believe, that a council person could stay there. There was a problem with churning, and I wrote what is now dubbed the Red Rule. That is, a person would bring an item to the city council. It would fail one month, such as a zoning request. There would be a whole room full of citizens that would be against a certain zoning request, and it would fail, and then it would be brought back up month after month after month, and then, but I stopped that. If something failed, it takes a year now before you can bring it back.
Mr. Chandler?
Thank you. You know, when I was young, I remember my father sitting me down and telling me, "Boy, you born in this world, and you don't have anything but your good name." Nobody, nobody in this world controls your good name, your ethics, but yourself. He instilled that into me when I was a young man. Being on the police department for 34 years, you can count on one hand the number of complaints that were turned in on me. I remember the last one that was turned in on me was turned in to Chief Sladen. Chief Sladen read it, looked at me, and said, "I don't believe it. I've known this boy, and he didn't do it. I have always stood on my ethics." Real quick, the deal that was brought up about getting a city attorney, we were being advised by the assistant city attorney that it was okay. If either one of us up here are going to be elected to the city council, and you go in and you sit down and you look at your legal representative, and they tell you, "Oh, it's okay," just like going to court, it's okay.
Thank you very much for those comments and responses to the questions. We conclude now the questions from our panelists. We will shift to the concluding remarks from each of our candidates. They will be two minutes, no longer, and they will come in reverse order from the opening comments. We will hear first from Ms. Margaret Thompson.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me today. You guys got me on a couple of them. So I would, goodness, again, I'm not a politician. I'm not an orator. I am a middle-school math teacher. I'd like to remind you that I'm educated, I'm experienced, and I'm effective. I do get out in the community. I get out and work. I would like to work for Clarksville. I'd like to work for the people. No matter what happens on November 3rd, I'm going to continue to do what I do. On November 4th, I'm going to get up, I'm going to put my clothes on, and I'm going to go pour into the children that I work with every day. I would appreciate your vote, so I can also pour in to the city. Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Thompson. We'll hear next closing remarks from Mr. Tim Chandler.
Thank you. Tim Chandler, born in the Providence, went to Burns Darden, went to the Providence Junior High at the time, Northwest High School, attended Austin Peay State University. Notice I said attended, didn't graduate. Went to work at HG Hills, a fixture in Clarksville for many years. Left there, went to work at the Clarksville Police Department. Dedicated my life to this city. I have coached Little League Soccer, Little League Baseball, Little League Basketball. I've been involved in this community. I was president of the Clarksville J.C.s, which at the time was the largest chapter in the state. I have dedicated my entire life to this city. And for what little pennants I get every month from the city council has nothing to do with it. It's the fact that I live, eat, and sleep, just like everybody else does inside this city. When I go to bed at night, the first thing I think of is, "Is everybody all right? Do they need anything?" Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then next, we will hear closing comments from Mr. Wallace Redd.
Thank you. And again, Helga and I, we've lived in Ward Four for the last 35 years. We raised our three children there. Helga and I, we've been going around knocking hundreds of doors, if not at least 1,000 by now. I'm a veteran. I'm a life member of the DAV, Chapter 45. I'm going to be honest and fair with everyone. If elected to the Clarksville City Council, I'm running for city council to put our neighborhoods first. I'm going to work for ethics reforms, just as I have in the past. I'm not employed by, I'm not retired from the city government. I'm not afraid to say no to bad ideas or higher taxes and wasteful spending. Regardless of your income or your social status, I believe that we all need to live in a safe and a good neighborhood, because we all pay taxes. I'm going to guard your rights and freedoms. I won't support any unjust or any unfair laws. Again, I'm Wallace Redd. You can contact me at wallisred.com is my website, or wallisred@aul.com, and I would sincerely appreciate your vote.
Thank you very much. And I want to say thank you to each of our candidates today for sharing their time and their thoughts with us. And on top of that, I want to say thank you for sharing your ideas as well as your hearts with us this day. We appreciate it very much. But most of all, I want to say thank you for your willingness to serve our community as an elected official on the Clarksville City Council, Ward Number Four. So your presence here today and your willingness to serve is greatly, greatly appreciated. I want to remind those who are watching that early voting will take place starting Wednesday, October the 14th, and that will run through Thursday, October the 29th. The location will be at the Election Commission Office at 350 Pageant Lane, Suite 404. And thank you also to our panelists once again, Mr. Jimmy Settle, Mr. Lee Erwin, and Mr. Jay Alberta. And also thanks to Mr. Phil Harpel for serving as our timekeeper here for this session. Thanks to the staff here at the Customs House Museum and Cultural Center for hosting today's forum, and also thank you to Leadership Clarksville, Your Area Chamber of Commerce, and to Rick Goodwin Productions for making this forum possible. Remember your rights. Remember your responsibilities when it comes to November the 3rd to cast your vote for the candidates of your choice. Until next time, I'm Van Stokes. Thank you for watching.